Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will have Plant Moran presentation on water and sewer, including some items on budget. Come on up, Martin.
They can't hear. Speak into your mic, I'm sorry. Vences.
Yeah, bring the microphone, Martin.
Thank you.
Even if you have to just carry it, that's okay.
Can we start it? Record to the cloud.
Here we go.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So, from the perspective of the payment of the capital improvement bonds, the water and sewer fees are-
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
No problem.
Martin, before you begin, if you don't mind, just in case for those in the audience and on Zoom that are not familiar with what it is specifically we're speaking about, if you could just give maybe a two-minute synopsis as to our last water budget meeting, and then we'll go into the questions from different council members, if you don't mind.
Okay, no problem. So, the last water and sewer budget called for approximately a six and a half, 6.75% water and sewer rate increase on the average.
Recording stopped.
Okay, sorry, we may have to start again.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Do we need to start again, or are we good? We good? Okay. Go ahead, Martin.
So, the budget calls for approximately a 6.75% water and sewer rate increase, and what that includes is for all, like fixed asset purchases, overall budget for water and sewer, and it is, the budget that you prepare is for a five-year plan, so you do project out fixed asset purchases, improvements, et cetera, for a five-year period. In that, it does include the water and sewer capital improvement bonds that were issued over the last year, and it does include in that the principal and interest that are going to be paid for those bonds. Currently, the budget is set to be based on water and sewer rate usage, so it's not specific to, you know, like a flat fee or anything like that. It is set for that, and the budget does call for, like I said, it's a five-year plan. Basically calculates how much cash you need at the end of five-year period in order to make sure that the water and sewer fund stays, I guess, in the black versus going upside down and having a deficit, and that's kind of the driver behind the whole model. It does look at the cash flows overall, so the cash, the revenues coming in and the expenditures coming out. Biggest factors that drive the water and sewer model are the water purchases that are made by the city from Great Lakes Water Authority, so that's a significant piece, and then, of course, capital improvements that are occurring within the water and sewer fund. So, if you have water main breaks, the capital expenditure that you have noted for, you know, CSOs, water meters, et cetera, all that's in the model. Those would be the biggest components, and then, of course, you have some salaries and some other expenses as well, but those would be by far the largest components of the water and sewer model.
And with my conversations with you, approximately nine million of it is for the new water meters. Is that correct?
That is in the budget right now, correct.
And, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
And for those in the audience or on Zoom, the advantages of these new water meters, I know some people have complained sometimes of, you know, they're not sure if their water bill is correct or not, one of the biggest advantages of these new water meters is it will be as, pretty much as accurate as you can get as far as technology is concerned. So, it's going to work definitely in the best interest of the residents, and for final water bills, it'll be much quicker, it'll be almost on the spot, they'll be able to do it through the water department, and it'll make things a lot more efficient. It already is efficient, but it'll take it to the next level with our water department freedom up to do, to provide the services that the residents need. So, it's definitely going to be a plus.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Martin, you and I spoke on the phone, and you said you'd work up some other different numbers for me. Did you ever do that?
So, we did calculate. I did have a conversation with city management overall, and there are some concerns that if you change the way the structure is done, that there may be some concerns over, like, are those charges legal or not?
Yeah.
Things like that.
And that's what I want you to explain.
So, from that perspective, so if, so yes, so if, basically if you change the water and sewer structure of how you invoice the customers, there are a couple cases that have been outstanding or have been out there a few years back. Both cases, one significant case a few years back, that basically prohibits cities, municipalities from charging in certain ways. Flat fees, for example, or trying to charge certain residents a higher fee versus others, there's just a lot of complexities involved, and it could potentially open up the city to a potential lawsuit in the future.
Charging something that's not a fee, but like a tax or-
It's almost like a tax, absolutely.
Well, so, it goes back to what I said before. The water, the water meters are in this budget, correct?
Correct.
Nine million dollars.
Correct.
And, again, right now, we don't even know if that's going to be enough, so there's a little question about that. So, the way they're charging the residents is by how much water they use, correct?
That is correct.
And how is that against the law? I mean, how is that with the law when I got to pay more for something that somebody else is the same, it's the same object? I mean, a water, a water meter arbitrarily, I'm just going to say, costs $200, and $200 for installation. Why should someone have to pay more than me, or I pay more than someone else? That's what I don't understand, how the law works, because, you know, in one way you're saying one thing, and in another way, we're doing another way. I don't get it.
So-
Council Chair.
Well, let's just-
So, what I would, what I would say to that is, I understand your concerns, and for me, I can completely understand your way of thinking into how it should be charged or could be charged. What I would encourage the city to do is obtain a legal opinion first before moving in a direction. And, you know, currently, we're sitting in the middle of March. Most of the time, the city implements water and sewer rate increases starting in December, so, you know, I realize we're a few months behind, and what I would encourage the city to do is take a look at the water and sewer rate structure over the coming months before the next water and sewer rate increase, so that way, if it is legally permissible to do certain things, and if the city council decides to do, go that route, then proceed that way, just to make sure that it's safe, that way you're not exposing yourself to a lawsuit that's, you know, potentially frivolous, or maybe there would be merit to it as well if you change the structure.
And that's the other thing I was going to say. Here we are in March, this water budget is going to be approved, it's going to be for two months?
Till June.
Actually, for a couple of months only, so it's like one, one, maybe two billing cycles at the very most.
Well, so, so when you make the approval, the rates go in effect, and they stay in effect, so it's not like it would go back retroactively and go back to the previous rates. If you did approve the 6.75% roughly increase, that increase stays until the next time, and then if there is an increase of 5% or 6, whatever that percentage is, then you can enact it on the new rates already. So, it's, it wouldn't necessarily be for two or three months, it would be on a go-forward basis.
Well, I understand, but the budget, the budget's only for two more, two more months.
Correct.
And the other thing is, is why do we wait so long to do a water budget? It's just like, I'm looking at the appendix page where we have the, where it says projects of water main replacement projects. Now, I don't know if those things have been started, are they, are they completed? I have no clue. So, we're actually, again, charging it on this budget, then in December, we're going to put them back on again and charge again.
So, so one thing is-
That's like double dipping to me.
So, so one thing to note is that, so one, water and sewers funds do not need a budget for expenses.
Correct, I understand that.
I know it sounds crazy, but they don't need a budget. I think the main idea is for, this is more on the rate side, rate setting, but if, to answer your question, is there double dipping or anything? There's not, because any money that's not spent in a certain fiscal year, that money carries over to the next fiscal year to be spent on those projects. And there's actually, if, in the model, in that last page that you pointed out, the very first column actually shows like what's unspent, and that carries over to the model, and the unspent money is from the year before. The other thing is, the reason there's such a huge delay this year in the, in this budget and this discussion is, as you remember, the audit itself took, the presentation for the financial statements did not occur until early January. The numbers that the city had overall on the records, just overall your internal records, were not in good enough shape in order to even be able to do the audit. That's why the budget's not coming into play until now. Years back, normally, the presentation would occur in November, so that's why the city council could make the decision to increase water and sewer rates effective December 1st, and actually, a couple years back, the city accelerated that water and sewer budget overall, the discussions, and we had these discussions in August and September, so that way, it would give the city more time to plan some of these expenditures, especially come early spring.
So, my big thing is, I'd like to see this come before council, like you said, much earlier, even September, August, September, so we know what we're looking at. I mean, you said 6.75% increase for water and sewage, is that combined total, or is there two different numbers, one for water, one for sewage?
That's a combined total, overall, the 6.76%.
So, 3.3, 3.38 for each one, roughly?
No, it's a combined, so the average 6.76. So, the water is 7.2, and sewer is 6.4, so once you average that out, it actually comes out to that number.
Okay.
The overall-
I, I, I know we need an increase, I just don't like the way it's being presented to the, to the taxpayers, where they really don't know what they pay for. They look, they pick up their water bill, they say, oh my God, look at what I'm paying for water, but they don't understand, all of this stuff is on your water bill, and people don't know it, and I think, well, I think the people need to know what's in their water bills, what they're paying for. They're paying for, you know, maintenance, they're paying for water main replacements, they're paying for all of this stuff, but all they think of is, my water bill was $500 or $600 for two months. How could I use that much water?
And, you know, so I think a very important thing to note, I think the city is definitely making good strides to get the financial records in order, not to pat my firm on the back, but that's why you hired Plant Moran Gap to assist with some of the financial, you know, just overall the records, et cetera. So, to be able to present this a lot sooner, next year or next couple of years, I don't foresee that being a problem. Having this in front of you in March, or whether it's in January or March, it is late, especially since, you know, normally you try and do an increase, if there is one, in December. So, clearly, it's already late, but given the circumstances, that was the best the city could do at this time.
So, a couple things, and you're going to be going next, and then, Constan, Councilman Constan. A couple things I want to point out. Number one, I've had calls, you know, complaining about the most recent water bill, and I want to point out to the general audience, is that the most recent water bills that you have received in the mail are for 92, I called the water department, and I spoke with Sheila, and she went through the whole thing, and I much appreciate the job that she does. She explained that that's for 90, the current, most current bill is for 92 days versus the traditional 60 days. So, there's an extra 50-some percent additional, not that you're paying 50% extra, but if your bill hypothetically was always $100, it's not going to be $150, because you're over 92 days versus 60 days, and that needs to be addressed, because everybody's thinking right now, why is my bill so high? Including one call I got today, was asking why she had $500. Her typical bill is around $350. It was $500 now, but it's only because you have an additional 32 days on this cycle, so I want to point that out, make sure the public knows that. Number two, people got to know that any charges we charge, as you know, Martin, is based on what we get from Great Lakes Water Association, so whatever they charge us, we charge it right back. And then the last one, I want to, I want to speak about, when me and you had a phone conversation, and if you call, I said, I like to reduce to the ridiculous, let's get it right down to the dollars and cents, and your quote, as I recall from my notes, was for a 60-day period based on an average water bill of around, roughly around $300, $350, and my handwriting is terrible, but I have here roughly around $4.50 to about $7, is that correct, or I can't read my own handwriting, it's pretty bad.
So, given the increases now, so we're talking about, so the average bill, so the 6.75% water and sewer rate increase, so the average bill would increase from, and are we saying 90 days, 30 days?
Well, they're usually 60, they're usually 60 days, just this cycle is 92 days, I don't know why, but it was 92 days.
But when I say average, like, are we saying it would be $6 times 3, or $6 times 2, because there's two-
I see, for a month, that's what we're saying, yeah.
So, is it monthly, somebody's bill going up $6, $12, $18?
It's per billing cycle, so every bill, every 60 days. Council Chair, from the example that was provided, I think it's about $4.56, every billing cycle.
That's what I wrote down at time. Okay, so while you frigging add out-
So, the average bill I have, that would go, the bimonthly bill, from roughly $180 to about $190.
Right, that's, that's why I recalled, and that's for a 60-day period.
Correct. It's about, so that actually comes out to-
Which would make it roughly about $5 a month.
6.6%.
Right, which is roughly about $5 a month. Councilman, you were next.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, thank you, Councilman. Martin, I just have a couple of things, I know when we spoke, one of the things that I know Councilman Muscat brought to my attention was the detailed breakdown of a water bill. This much for water, this much for sewage, this much for CSO, this much for meter, 1, 2, 3, 4, these, here are your debts, here's your water, how much you've used, this is how much your sewage is, at the grand total, 62 days, this is how much you're paying. I know I've asked that question, are we going to be able to see the city moving forward in that direction?
Before you can do that, I would highly recommend you get a legal opinion, if you can invoice for that.
Yeah.
If you can invoice separately for the meter in a certain way, if you can-
No, not invoicing separately, it's all in the same bill, it's just broken down, it's a detailed water bill.
Okay.
And I, I understand what you're saying, and it's how much you're paying for that, because I don't like the fact that if someone uses, that has four kids, okay?
They're being charged more.
Are being charged more for the same service.
So, I want you to-
And I think that's not right, but i- if it's the, if it's the illegal way, we can't do it, but this is where I'm going to ask the mayor to have our corporation council look into that, because I think, you know, every time we, we have done something in this city as far as water goes, we have shared the cost to the entire city, but in that saying, some people get charged more than others.
So, Councilman, I actually, there's a law, I read it. Do you remember the name of the law? I forget what it is.
Well-
Bolt versus-
Bolt that one?
It was bolt case, I forgot.
Correct, bolt versus what, so my system was in turn, and I had her look into it, and so a lot of them actually settle on cases, but the bolt is the actual case, the remaining municipalities just settle through so that they don't have to go through a bunch of legal fees and whatnot. So, what you, what you, me and you, you and I spoke about was that, because I actually dug into it, and I believe there were surrounding cities that were also affected by this, so they reverted back to doing this, but I never read anything where it said you can't show a detailed breakdown of what each water billing cycle seems or looks like.
And, you know, to be honest, if, I don't know what the limits are on your system, like just from the perspective of computer system, and be able to provide even more detailed invoices, so I don't know what kind of limitations there are. I mean, could you break it out to, you know, 20 different categories and different things that-
I think so.
The residents can afford. I, I can't speak to that, I don't know.
But he said you'd have to get a, you know, a legal-
But even if you, even if you maintain like the current way, and just say, you know, like, if someone's paying $180, like, so much is going for, like you said, the water meters, et cetera, maybe that's something that's doable, again, I don't know. The other thing is, if you look at, you know, some residents use more water than others, clearly. Does that mean that they're utilizing the water and sewer system more than others? It's not just water that you get out of the water and sewer system. There's a lot that goes behind the scenes, it's not just, you know, what goes through the faucet. So, does that mean that, you know, if there's a lot more water that goes through your faucet, through your, to your house, does that mean the water meter works harder? I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but there's different schools of thought, how you charge for certain assets and for, you know, certain fees.
Okay, but you know what? What I'll do, I'll check into it with, with our corporate council, and then I'll make sure and let you guys know what he-
Please let me know. And then I just have one last question, I know it's probably something you can't answer, but we're, we're potentially budgeting for $9 million for these new water meters, correct?
That's about $9 million, this is in the budget, correct.
Okay, can you give me a breakdown roughly of what we're expecting each water meter to cost us?
So, I would have to defer to Mr. De-
So, Councilman, we're still in the, in the, so the number is 9 million, and this is part of the bond sales that we did a couple years back. So, the debt service that Councilman Muscat was referring to is baked in, because the debt service was generated by a number of projects in the water and sewers, not just the water meter. So, we have the CSOs, one was done, two on the way, and the water meter, and all the related costs. The, the water meter project, the replacement project will cost about, we budgeted $9 million. We are in the product selection, today was the last day with the product selection on the meters. So, once that's taken place, we haven't selected the product, today was the last presentation, there will be a product selection, after which the cost of the units will be identified. But this, this process will take us into the next level, and will identify all the things that you're discussing today. You know, how do you want it to be presented, how you want the, you know, the cost to be shared, you know, how do you want the bill to look like, because it's all going to be revamped as part of this effort. As far as what Martin said about the debt service, retiring the debt service related to water and sewers, that will be a separate discussion, that will have to go to legal, because, you know, I don't know if you wanted to include the debt service on your portion of the water bill.
So, we don't have an, and I'm so sorry to interrupt you, we don't know-
There is no unit cost, because we're in the product selection, you have to select the product before you get the unit cost.
So, so can we say that, hey, we're budgeting high, and we could potentially come back to a number where, hey, might be $6 million or $7 million?
Actually, I don't think the 9 will be enough, that was budgeted.
I don't think it's going to be enough.
But we're still in the, it's, things have gone up quite a bit, but we haven't selected it, so we don't know.
But again, we're, we're being charged on our water budget for it, that's my problem.
So, because you sold bonds and you're making payments.
So, we have to pay for the bond payment now?
You're making payments, yes, sir.
Right.
Yes.
And that's understandable.
Yes.
Councilman Robert Constan?
If I could clarify too, so, the, the way the water budget is built, it's big, so you're not, you already have the cash for the meters from the bond issuance. Now, the water budget, in order to pay for those, it's purely for a principal and interest. So, it's about a million and a half per year, that's what's built into the budget. The million and a half includes the CSOs and the water meters, so the full bond issuance is what those, those proceeds were meant for. So, you're not paying for $9 million all at once for water meters, that cost is spread, I believe the amortization for the bonds is 20 years, so it's over a 20-year period. And I did do a rough calculation of if you decided to do a flat fee for the water meters, it came out to, for an average user, it came out to about 56 cents per every two months difference, for the average user.
For how long, though?
Just in this model, so for a five-year period.
Five years. So, can you repeat that again? So, for five years, 56 cents?
56 every two months for the average user in the system.
Right, so averages out a little bit over a quarter per month.
For someone that doesn't use much water, so like more of like bare minimum, clearly that would go up a little bit, and I believe it was around $2 per, every two months, and for those that use a lot of water, that's the flip, that's probably about $2 of savings every two months or so.
Okay. Last question, and we got Councilman Constan?
And so, my last question, Ali Deeb, and maybe the administration, and Mariana, when you guys get a breakdown of what that's going to cost, can you get that back over to the council as soon as possible, so that we can, you know, have a little ease in mind as well? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Constan, go ahead.
Just three brief points. Number one, you remember, was it about three years ago, Martin, when we, then Councilwoman Lisa X Clayton suggests, moved to reduce the water bills by 25%?
10%.
And we didn't, that year, we didn't pass the budget, so we used last year, the year prior, so we were sort of a year behind. Do, how many years ago was that?
That was about three or four years ago, not having the water and sewer rate increase at all. I was looking at, you know, what kind of impact it has on current rates, because, you know, not having a water and sewer rate increase in one year, ultimately, it does catch up, and, you know, you're still passed down increases in cost, so we were talking about just water purchases alone, it's about 4% increase every single year. You're looking at infrastructure costs, capital costs, and inflation's been, I'm sure everybody notices, when they go to the grocery store, it's been pretty crazy. I believe it's around 7.5% recently. So, all these costs are going up, not having an increase will deplete the cash that you have in the water and sewer fund. So, a few years ago, when that happened, very likely, it's probably about a percent, percent and a half easy of an adjustment now, so if it wasn't for that, you'd probably be looking at like a 5% water and sewer.
Because it's an enterprise fund, so it has to be solvent and, and-
It has to be self-sufficient.
And then, number two, we've always talked about separate meters for water and sewer, and I don't know that that would be cost-effective, so that someone would get a bill for the water they used, and then a bill for what went down the sewer. People say they water their lawn or wash their car. And then, number three, there's several lawsuits against the Great Lakes Water Authority going now, there's a lawsuit filed by all the commercial users against the Great Lakes Water Authority for the way they set fees and so forth.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Tom Wenzel, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. You know, Councilman Muscat touched on it, you know, my wife and I decided to raise, you know, raise our five children in Dearborn Heights, and we're getting penalized, there's a rental house across the street from us where it's been rented for the last 10 years to a bachelor, and because we decided to stay in Dearborn Heights and raise our family, we're getting penalized to pay more for a water meter than this guy is, and he pays the water bills, because he's a renter, but still, I mean, it's not fair at all. I mean, it's a $200 water meter, you know, I mean, if I go in, if I go into Walmart and I buy a bag of chips, it's going to cost me $5, but the bachelor can come in there and get it for $1.50. It doesn't make any sense at all to me whatsoever, and, now, the 9, I think Councilman Baydoun was trying to get a, the $9 million, is that for the cost of the water meters and installation and maintenance? I mean, let's be transparent, what is $9 million exactly for? Don't get off on any other CSO or anything like that.
No, that one single project was, was estimated at a total project cost of $9 million.
Which involves what?
That will include unit price, installation, total project cost, that single project minus engineering. Engineering was set separately, so when it was presented to the council way before my time, there was a list of projects, and they, they presented the estimate for each one, the CSOs and water meters. That single project was $9 million, $9 million even, and that's still in the budget today. So, that's what they used as a model. Until we actually put the project out on the street for bid, I, you know, we'll come back to you, obviously, you need to approve the contract, but that's what we have today, total project cost.
Okay, now, did, is there a study done on how much money the city's going to recoup? Me paying $500, and then my neighbor paying $150 for these meters, how much is the city getting back to? Have we done a study on that?
Not that I know of, no.
Shouldn't that be done? I mean, shouldn't we know how much, I mean, how much, you want money to fund it, how much are we getting back, and then how much do we actually need?
Okay, so, so the reason for the project, the justification for that project isn't the estimated saving, it's, it's a combination of things. One, the main reason was the fact that your existing systems are no longer supported. You can't buy them, you can't find parts for them, you can't, and plus, all the issues with theft and potentials, they're just old system, way beyond their useful life. So, that was the main justification. In terms of savings, we think it's going to work a lot better in terms of savings for a simple reason, that we add what we sell versus what we buy, and we find the discrepancy. So, we know we have losses, but where and how much, we can't tell. When, when I have to go to eBay to find parts, I, I can't rely on the systems anymore. So, there will be an improvement. If nothing else, we'll be able to have a better system, more efficient, more up-to-date. Now, time will tell, if we're going to capture more of what commodities we buy, we, we expect it to.
You know, okay, also, now, now that we're doing this, you know, you said the last product presentation was today.
Yes, sir.
Did we look at a product that, that separates home usage against outdoor usage, like water sprinklers and stuff like that? This, this would be the time to do that, did we do that?
That's not on the water side, that's on the sewer side, and we currently are with the sewer, the sanitary sewer processing facilities, we're working on that issue, because we're not the only community that's facing that. So, the- So the irrigation is what we call it. We're currently, the model for the Down River, which is the part of the city that, the south side of the city that goes into the DUA, the current consideration for new billing methodology is the use of winter average, no longer even estimating. So currently we're paying based on water consumption. We send copies of what we sell and then we pay sewer based on water sales. Going forward, we're just going to take the winter consumption where there's absolutely no irrigation, no, no lawn service of any kind, no water, no pools to fill, and then use that for sewer purposes. Now, that's one option, and, and this is what we're leaning against, at least I'm still evaluating this. Second option will be what Councilman Constant indicated, put sewer meters on the community side. We're not, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at other communities now to see how much luck they had with those, because yes, you may save on sewer charges, but then you have to consider the cost of maintenance and upkeep and, you know, if these sewers fail, the meters fail, you got additional cost. So we're, we're more likely to do winter consumption for billing purposes.
Okay. One, one more thing, is the treasurer, Lisa X Clayton on? She's not on? Okay. Now, now, the, the meters for the, the sewage, the sanitary sewer, basically, would that just be one meter at one point?
No, it's, it's actually depending on what you have. So, so in our case, for DUA, let's take DUA because we're in the middle of negotiations now. DUA is the Down River Utilities, so we have sanitary sewers that we, we share with other communities. So you have to take the flow coming out of your communities, multiple points, deduct what comes out into it from other communities, and then bill you for the difference. So I will have to consider what comes into Dearborn Heights from Dearborn and Inkster, and then what comes out to Taylor, and then the difference will be ours.
Do we still own or part own the, the waste treatment facility? Didn't we, didn't we purchase that a few years ago?
The Down River facility?
Yeah, do we still? Is that still?
Us in multiple cities, from the county, we bought it from the county, but us in all the other cities.
We are signatory.
Yeah.
I don't know if I call it ownership, I'm not, you know, but signatory, yes. We're part of 14 communities, 13 plus the airport, yes.
Does that give us any advantage, or, I mean?
So currently seven out of the 14, or eight out of the 14 have decided to do 100% meters. And that is, the meters are sewers, so they only pay for what they use. They're still on the hook for the extra, you know, I and I infiltration part, but the people elected to do that were either on upstream or at the end, which made it easier. If you're the first, you just put one meter and you're done. If you're at the tail end, you just take one meter that supply, but we're in the middle. So we have multiple locations going into the city, and I have Ramalas, I have Inkster, I have Dearborn, and then I have to take the stuff coming out of the city and the deducted too. I don't think there will be a saving for us to do that, so I'm, I'm more lenient to recommend average winter, three months' winter, and consider that our fair sewer.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
Thank you, Mr. Deep, appreciate it. Okay, we have, next, Councilwoman Nancy Brier, and then we're gonna do a quick one, because we gotta wrap this up. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just have a couple of concerns. First of all, water overflow, is there any way we can control that so it's not so expensive?
That's what we were just talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Water loss, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, well, the overflow, yeah. So, that's all we can do with that. And the other thing is, I've heard that Highland Park, we're covering their share?
It's actually, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I don't know exactly.
So, I was in a meeting.
The Great Lakes Water Authority, when they, you know, they, maybe they have a lot of people that don't pay.
So there was...
So that's figured into the water authorities, the Great Lakes Water Authority's rates. Go ahead.
So, I was in a meeting Friday with CWW, so it's the Central Western Wayne Communities, and, so, 10, a little over 10 years ago, so Highland had an issue with a water plant. So they had, the state, it's actually a state, told the Water Authority to open the meters for, or open the water for Highland. So they said for a few days, turns out to a few weeks, now it's few years. So now, basically, what they're, I mean, it was all over the news, actually, the channel, all the three networks were at that meeting. So they had, they're imposing all the cities to come up with some of the money, but what they're gonna do is they're gonna put the money aside, bond it, till they retrieve the money from either the state or Highland. So at this point, it's still up in the air. There's a huge lawsuit filed by the CWW or CWA, and they're including us, they actually volunteered me to be on the committee for that. And one of the things that we, the committee's gonna be looking at is how to hold that community accountable and the state. So the state allowed them to go through the process and the state just kinda stepped away and they said, basically, the communities, you guys, you know, you take care of it. So there's a lot of attorneys involved and there's a huge lawsuit, it's over $60 million lawsuit. So I'll keep you guys updated, but right now, there's still a lot of, a lot of legal things going on and we, like I said, they called a special meeting on Friday, we all went to several hours and they were just trying to hash out some things with a bunch of attorneys present from, from that organization.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'll say, Councilwoman?
I'll say, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Ahmad, this will be the last question.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor. So Martin, my question is, the 6.7 increase, that's most likely gonna be just for next year, correct? Because until we come up with an actual quote for the water meters done, it's gonna change. We have to approve something else, correct?
So right now, it's a 6.7% roughly increase going forward. And then the next budget cycle, as you're looking at a water and sewer fund, you'll have to decide if you're increasing, you know, whatever the percentage amount is. Then you can also decide if you're gonna do like a flat fee for certain things or not, depending on what the attorney says. But I would say, so, you're correct, so it's the 6.7 for the time being, but it's not gonna go retroactively, like, go back to the fees right now.
Correct, yeah.
It's on a go-forward basis.
Because I'm just looking at this example that was provided to me, it seems like it's with the 6.7 that would go down for the next five years, but looking at whatever Mr. Deep said, most likely it's gonna change after next year.
Yes, and so it is definitely a fluid model overall. So every year when the city looks at the water and sewer budget, you do kinda project out what the average increase is gonna be on a per-year basis over the next five years. And that number does go up and down a little bit. I do have to say that for the most part, the city's been very, I would say, forward-thinking, a lot more than I would say even many communities. And so you're able to project out like overall your expenses and so on, and you're pretty close in that percentage year-over-year. But if the water meters, for example, are a lot less, then that's gonna be built into the model that there's gonna be a savings, so the percentages are gonna be lower next year, the increases. If something, capital outlay goes down, again, it's gonna be the same thing. Now, on the flip side, if capital outlay goes higher, then that percentage might increase a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay. And last one, this comment from Councilman Muscat.
I, I just, I want to know, or, or make our administration aware that, you know, like I was talking about this appendix page where the water replacement projects, we have ARPA money for a lot of this. And we could reduce our cost as we, we go forward, we use some of that ARPA money and help reduce the cost to our citizens. And, and maybe you could work with Plant Moran when they do the water budget next time and, and see about, I mean, we have ARPA money, there's a lot of money that, that we, just for infrastructure. We should be utilizing it because the taxpayers need a break, somewhere along the line. We have to hold the line.
I, I don't know though, at the same time, Councilman, I know with the ARPA money, there was a lot of spec...
Well, I think it's be able to be, but it's, I believe it can be used for this, and whatever, it's capital improvements and whatever we can use, we should use it to help defer the cost to all of us. We're, we pay the same bills everybody else is paying, so I just want the, the administration to look at that and our, you know, Plant Moran to look and see if we could use some of that money and help defer the cost.
Okay.
I mean, $5 million on that page alone, that could, that would reduce, you know, even if it's 1%, it would be nice. Thank you.
But, but the only thing to keep in mind is, for that money, as a city and as administration, they will be selecting whatever projects are in the best interest of course of the residents. So my point is, they'll be prioritizing.
Well, I understand that, Councilman, but we have, you know, we, we've got $10 million or $15 million, and this is only $5 million, okay? That helps reduce the water cost for the residents, that's a big, big thing for people that are on, like myself, I'm on a fixed income.
Sure, it'll be in consideration, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of projects already on the horizon for the administration, for the residents.
And I understand that, but we have to look...
So whichever one's our best.
We have to look at everything.
But, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate it, no problem. So at this particular point, first of all, thank you, Martin, appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and end the study session on water and sewer, and we'll be going into the Warren Valley Golf Course presentations. Madam Clerk, we're gonna take a five-minute, five-minute break, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll go ahead and get started. All right, before we begin the next session, I wanna give members of the audience and members on Zoom an opportunity to be able to ask questions in regards to the water and sewer. So as always, I, wait, Martin and crew, if you don't mind, we're gonna talk some more water. This has been such a nice subject, we, we want more of this stuff. All right, here we go.
It's a fluid subject.
Huh? Yeah, it's a fluid subject. Yeah. I hope it's more interesting for you to talk about than just accounting, right? More fun. All right, so at this particular point, I'm gonna go ahead and bring up anybody from the audience that prefers to speak or ask a question. You will have two minutes, two and a half minutes to bring up your, okay, three minutes, somebody from the audience asking for three, I'll allow that. Please state your name.
This one's four.
Yeah, please state your name, the street you live on, I, I think you should have this memorized in your case.
How are you?
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Zohair Abdalha, 354 Rosemary, Dearborn Heights.
Councilman, how you doing?
How are you?
Closer to the mic.
Can you just get to the mic closer?
Sure. Is this good enough?
Yes.
Okay. I, I remember when the city council, a couple of years ago, passed resolution 7 to 0 to reduce the water rate by 10%. The late mayor dragged it for six months, did not execute the resolution which was passed by the city council. Then he came during budget time and asked for 6% or 6.7% increase, and the city council at that time approved it after they approved minus 10%. Now, I see that you want to increase the rate of water in the city, which is already probably the highest in the Wayne County. I believe the bond was stating clearly that the bond money, the annual bond money has to be paid from the general fund. If I'm mistaken, please correct me, if any one of you has different information, please correct me and let the, the public know. The money was supposed to be paid around $1 million from the general fund. Now, my understanding, probably we don't have money enough to pay the $1 million in the general fund. So we go to the same thing which the previous administration used to do. Anytime he needed money, he goes to the water fund, he pays anything and everything from the water fund, and that was the biggest slush fund in the city for the previous administration. And I hope we're not going to do the same thing. We need to tell the resident, do we have enough money to pay this bond from the general fund or not? And if you guys going to vote to manipulate the contract which we have, which call for the payment to be made from the general fund, and you're going to get it from the resident by adding 6% to the water, that would be a mistake. We should follow the contract, we should follow the law. Thank you, that's all I need to say.
You got 30 seconds.
That's okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna answer it? You want Martin? Okay. Martin, do you mind answering that, if you don't mind? Answers to his questions?
Does the contract say it has come from the general fund?
I don't have the contract in front of me, so...
No, so the water and sewer bond is a water and sewer obligation, needs to be paid out of general money from the water and sewer fund. And the water and sewer fund is supposed to raise revenue from the users of the water and sewer fund. If the water and sewer fund is not able to make the obligation, the general fund would have to step in and pay that. The general fund, it would bankrupt the general fund. And ultimately, the general fund money that comes into the general fund are property taxes, so no matter what, residents would have to pay for that. So you have to raise more property taxes in order to pay for that.
Not doing that one. Inflation just went up, those assessments just came out, you, those conversations are hard. They're worse than the water conversations.
But the water and sewer improvement bonds are the responsibility, technically, of the water and sewer fund.
Martin, I'm just asking for the record, if that's okay, Council?
Go ahead.
And, and to the mayor, does that say, the contract state, what you're stating, or does the contract state what Mr. Zohair Abdalha stated?
I don't have the contract in front of me, I know that's the general obligation of the city, but the water and sewer fund issued the bonds, it belongs to the water and sewer fund.
But, but keep in mind, and I know I've had, and I see where, I'm sorry, Abdalha has come from, but like Martin just mentioned and some I've mentioned in the past, no matter where you're getting it from, at the end of the day, the initial faucet for that money is from the residents. I mean, you know, no pun intended, but no matter what, the residents are paying, whether they're paying through the...
That's correct.
...water bill, whether they're paying it from, you know, if we take from the, for example, from the general fund, the general fund is not out of my direct pocket from one person's pocket, it's money that was collected through taxes. So no matter what, it is still ultimately the residents, it's not, you know, anybody else that pays it. And what it's called, you know, I, I honestly, I, I'm just speaking as a resident right now, I don't know if I have a problem with it, with whichever fund it's paid out of, because either way, it's still coming out of my pocket at the end.
Yeah, so the one other item to note is, so is noted earlier, the bond principal and interest of approximately $1.5 million a year. And the water and sewer fund, in order to raise $3 million of cash, it's a representative of 1% increase in water and sewer rates. So that translates to the, the water, the capital improvement bonds cost the residents about half a percent of an increase on the water and sewer rates, 0.5%.
Okay. Thank you, Martin. Anybody else in the audience that has a question in regards to the water and sewer?
I think Vince does.
Come on up.
Thanks, Martin.
Thank you, Martin.
Martin, the, sometimes the general fund will, in the past, would borrow money from the water fund, correct?
Have to be paid back.
But not vice versa?
It was a vice versa, so the water, the general fund borrowed money from water and sewer.
Wait, you wanna, you wanna say that on the speak, if you don't mind on the microphone? Sorry, Vince.
To help cash flow.
Okay. So what is, in order to be able to borrow money, so the general fund was in a deficit situation a few years back, I don't remember the exact number of years, but it was during the recession when the property taxes...
It was borrowed with interest.
And what happened is the water, the general fund was able to borrow money from any fund that had any money, and it did borrow money from the water and sewer fund, I believe there was also another fund or two that it borrowed money from.
Library.
Interest was paid on that money, because in order to make it a legal borrowing, interest had to be paid.
Correct. Thank you, Martin. Thank you. Throws this off. Come on up, Vince. Sorry, Vince. Councilman broke the rules here. Go ahead.
Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street. The mayor touched a little bit on the...
Talking to the microphone, please.
The mayor touched a little bit on the water issues with Highland Park, but according to the news media, it's going to affect all the cities in Wayne County to pay their bill. So is this gonna be part of the Great Lakes Water Authority?[1738.99]
Can't hear you, Vince.
Is the Great Lakes Water Authority going to be tacking this on to every city? And if Martin can touch, touch on that, to give us a better insight? And there's a lot of, some of the cities are filing a class action lawsuit against Highland Park. Are we going to join that class action lawsuit? Because our tax dollars shouldn't be, have to pay for their bills. It's double taxation.
Okay.
I like that.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, it is, everybody's affected. However, the reason why I mentioned the Central Western Wayne is because we're part of the Central Western Wayne community. And those are the city managers, supervisors, and the mayors from that community were present at that meeting. So because we're part of that coalition, that's why we joined into that meeting. However, other communities are involved as well, but they're not part of the CWW. So there is a lawsuit going on right now. So it's actually, again, I don't want to bore you, this, it was about a three-hour meeting. And one of the things was brought up, so they wanted to see if the lawsuit could be, well, it's on a state level. So they're wondering, because it's against, part of it's part of the state. So they wanted to actually go on a federal level to sue the state because the state allowed this to happen. And they never intervened, you know, they basically, they went to the GLWA, says, okay, turn the water on, and boom, they just disconnected, they never intervened. And so there's a lot of questions right now, so there's not really any answers, you know, because there was, like I said, you know, it was a three-hour meeting. I mean, even the ARPA money that they received, I think it was like $3, $4 million, that was also, was brought up. But there was a lot more questions than there's answers. So now, there is a lawsuit, it's still pending, you know, that they had a, they thought they had a resolution, but then, you know, they're appealing the lawsuit, they're appealing the resolution. So it's going back in front of the judge.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And we're going to try to wrap this up, go ahead. Sir, state your name, street you live on, you have 10 seconds.
Speaking as a resident, Moe Baydoun, Dearborn Heights, Amboy Street. My question is to Martin and his amazing staff here at Plant Moran, what if we had two meters? What if we had a meter that checked the sewer and the, and the second meter that was checking the water?
Storm drain is what you really want, not the sewers, but the storm drain.
But what if we had two meters? Would that, would that assist us? So what if we operate the first meter to check one?
Wait, you got to talk to us, because it's not coming on the microphone.
Two meters, that's my question. I think Martin understands.
That's probably a question for Mr. Deep, I presume.
I brought that up years ago.
Mr. Deep, you want to answer that?
You can't have two meters.
Matter of fact, we had a letter that was sitting on the counter, the Water Department, about that.
It'd be impossible.
Separate meter.
I'm just asking, I'm asking the total amount, what would that operate for us? How would the city?
Okay, guys, you got to talk into the microphone.
Talking to the microphone, guys.
It may cost us $25 million, I get it. And I'm not saying we're going to do it, but I just want the residents to know, if we did have two meters, would we get better readings, one going to sewer, one going to water? And we would have an understanding breakdown of exactly what's happening. That's all I'm asking, I'm just thinking outside the box a little bit. I know it's expensive, and I know, I'm not saying that the city can afford it. But I'm asking, would it be more precise for the residents?
Yeah, you can't have a meter because it goes down the storm drain. You can't, you know.
Separate meter.
Okay, guys, one meeting, please, go ahead.
Good evening. This question comes up all the time. You know, the argument is, well, I really like a green lawn, and so I'm going to put the water into my lawn to make my house beautiful, but that water never goes into the sanitary sewer. Yet I'm getting charged for sewer based on the number of units of water. Here's the problem. Most of your sewer costs are fixed. You have to have the same amount of money coming out from your customers to pay for sewer treatment. So you could pay for a second meter, an irrigation meter, to measure outside water usage. And you would then pay for less units of sewer coming out of your house. But since you need the same amount of money from all of your customers, all it's going to result in is raising the sewer rates even more. Because instead of spreading that cost over, I'm just making up a number, 100 units, you're now spreading it over 90. So everyone is going to still have an increase in their sewer rate. There will be a pocket of people here and there that it works out for based on the volume, and it's strictly a mathematic exercise at that point.
Okay.
But most other communities, once they realize, oh, we have to raise sewer even more, and we have to pay for the second meters to go on the houses, they usually back away from the project.
What I'm asking is.
Go ahead, quick.
So I ask that question, is there already meters on homes that are reading them? Some of them are bad, some of them are good. We can potentially leave some, get all the new ones that are operating for sewers. I'm just going to stop.
Council Chair, I talked to a plumber, and he told me the cost of replumbing your house would be astronomical to accommodate that kind of a system.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Anybody else from the audience? If there's nobody in the audience, I'm going to go to Zoom. Nobody else in the audience? One, two, three, none, okay. Madam Clerk, anybody on, anybody from the audience? If somebody's in the audience, come on up. Anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
I think we got somebody.
Okay.
We have somebody coming.
Somebody from the audience is going to speak, and then nobody else on Zoom wants to speak, correct? Okay, so it's the last person, and we will end our session on water and sewer. And immediately start on Warren Valley. Go ahead.
Good evening. Hassan Saab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. Referring to Councilman Baydoun's question about.
You got to speak into young.
Referring to Councilman Baydoun's question about the second meter. I own a house in Novi, it has two meters. One's just built directly for the sprinkler system, and the other one's built for sewage and water. And to Councilman Winsalls, that it's going to be.
Astronomical.
Or some crazy amount to plumb it, that's false. Because that, the only, the only thing that a meter connects to is a line going outside.
That's when your house was built originally, it was plumb that, plumb that way.
Right, but they can tap where the valve is, they just go up with the T and connect to another pipe.
Well, you got faucets all the way around your house.
I'm sorry?
You got faucets all the way around your house. You know, anytime you use outside, there's a faucet to wash your car.
We're talking about, the meters are designed strictly for sprinklers. And if you have a spigot outside, it's connected, the pipe, the lead's connected to it. Which brings that question up to my house. I have almost a half acre in front of my house that here in Dearborn Heights, that I, I water my lawn three, four times a day. The rates are, yeah, I got the bus lawn in the neighborhood.
I'll debate that.
I'm not.
You haven't seen my lawn yet.
Definitely better than yours, Councilman.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against it, I love the idea.
It's just, but other cities do it.
Existing construction, there are costs involved. I mean, underground work, I mean, you just can't put a meter.
I mean, the cost between the water bill and replumbing it, I think would equal out evenly for one bill to add.
If we do a study on it, it'd be interesting to see.
Council Chair. Thank you very much. Okay, guys.
About this right here, real quick. I brought this up years ago about having a separate meter to water lawns with, okay? It was shot down by Mayor Pletko saying, it wouldn't be fair to my next-door neighbor if they couldn't afford to put a water meter on. I got two electric meters on my house. Does that mean my second electric meter needs to come off because my next-door neighbor can't afford to put one on? I like the idea, but right now, we're in a standstill.